Welcome to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectment meeting, Monday, March 27, 2023. I'm going to call this meeting to order and as always, begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Before we get started, on behalf of the board, I'd like to send out condolences to the family of Bob Duchamp, Bob, very active, him and his wife Tina, Black Tavern, working hand in hand with the Historical Commission. It was a sudden passing, and I know I speak for the board and on behalf of the people in town, we offer our sympathies to the Duchamp family.
Yeah, Chris is great.
Rest in peace, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Minutes from joint meeting of 2/27/23, Mr. Marcy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the joint meeting of February 27, 2023, the joint meeting of March 9, 2023, and the meeting of March 13, 2023.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous, thank you. Appointments, acting clerk, can you take this for me, please?
Yes, we have, for the Economic Development Committee, Dr. Robin, is it Furkel?
Very good.
Thank you.
That will work.
Thank you very much. Terms to expire on 6/30/2026.
Want to come up and introduce yourself and tell us about yourself?
Yeah, sure.
For the record, we were practicing the name in the back to make sure we didn't get it wrong.
Slavic names, they don't leave in vowels. So, my name's Robin Furcal, and I am Dudley resident for the last 25 years. I grew, I had two sons that went to Shepherd Hill and now are moved on, and for the first, I would say, maybe 20, 21 years of living in Dudley, I commuted to Worcester and for, first for my corporate career at Unum and then as an academic at Assumption University. About four years ago, I had the opportunity to take a job at Nichols College, and the primary driver of that was to be part of the community. Like, I was ready to, not A, commute, but B, was to really give back and to become part of the community that I live in. And so, as being the graduate dean at Nichols College, you know, I really feel strongly that there's a good connection to that role and the Economic Development Committee, so that I can represent both the community as a person who lives here, but also as someone who, you know, works and engages in one of the bigger institutions, employment places here in Dudley. So, really looking forward to it. I was really excited to kind of stumble, to be honest, to stumble upon the fact that there was an opening, and reached out to Bill, the town planner, and have attended a meeting, and I'm excited to get started.
Any tough questions, or are we doing softballs today?
So, got in the middle softball, just that you'd like to welcome her to the committee. That Economic Development Committee has become very active in town, it's really taken on a life of its own, and her expertise and her obvious education and ability would be a great fit.
Mr. Marcy.
Yeah, I second that, Mr. Sullivan. I believe that gives that board a full, that you'll be the full member, make, you'll have a full board then, right? And EDC.
Good. This is good.
Excellent.
All right, do we hear a motion?
So, I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, citizens' comments, anyone have a comment not regarding an agenda item tonight? Hearing none, moving forward. Oh, I'm sorry.
Does this might work?
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, Mary. It should work.
I just had a few questions.
Could you just introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Mary Sansucci, Ramshorn Road.
Thank you.
I know that the feasibility study for Dudley's share for Shepherd Hill is 463,000. Do you guys happen to know offhand what the Charlton share is?
It's a 50-50 split, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
So, it's about the same?
Yes.
Okay. I wondered how the 463,000 got into the Prop 2.5 column? Why isn't it with? It seems to have gotten rolled in with that and also with the roof for a million, $900,000 total? Why is it Prop 2.5 and not in another column? Like, with Prop 2.5, it won't go away, that $1,900,000, do you follow me?
Yes. Mr. Town, Mr. Ray, you want to take this?
So, we've had many internal discussions and some public hearings, and the portion of the override for education was recommended by the school committee, just as the municipal side was recommended by the FAA and the Board of Selectmen.
And I'm not talking about this, it's, this is a physical thing that we could pay this debt off, it just seems to me, I'm a fine arts major, so I'm struggling with this stuff, but it seems to me that we could pay this off and not have it as part of the 2.5, because that always carries through, those numbers.
That's right, it could be debt excluded, but again, we acted on the recommendation of the school committee for the override number in total, and we did discuss debt excluding it and making it a one-time cost, and we also gamed out the first year of that going towards capital, and then subsequent years, two and three, putting that into an educational stabilization fund to carry us out into years four and five and beyond. So, that money that remains, and you're correct, remains on the tax rolls, gets put into an educational stabilization fund controlled by the town meeting, requiring a two-thirds vote to be spent and would be applied to future year assessments.
Okay, so, does that fund generate any interest?
Depending on the size of it, it does. If there's sufficient money.
I mean, it just seems a shame to have hundreds of thousands of dollars sitting in a, in a fund that doesn't benefit us in some way.
The biggest benefit, I think, that was discussed is that it keeps our assessments at bay in years four, five, and beyond, as opposed to having to come back to the voter again in those years to look for additional money to make the assessment number.
And the other thing, I was very surprised to read that the additional funds raised by the override are earmarked for the stated purpose only in the first fiscal year?
That's a state regulation, that's a state law.
That's horrible.
Yeah, it's, there's no question that it's going to go towards municipal, and there's no other place to put it in years three, four, and five. So, we're very confident that the intended purposes will be beyond, beyond year one. They'll absolutely be going in the stated portion to education, particularly seeing there'd be an education stabilization fund and towards the municipal side.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to make a comment about is communication. I would have been delighted to go to that forum had I known anything about it, and to tell you the truth, I've asked friends, neighbors, Dudley residents, if they knew anything about it? Nobody did, and I watched the YouTube, and it was very, very sparsely attended. For something this important, I think there were just a terrible turnout, and I was kind of hoping that you people would put it on again or something similar.
Let's take into two issues. The first issue was how it was communicated. It was town webpage, town Facebook, town Instagram, town paper?
Town paper, town electronic signboard.
Electronic signboard.
And cable access TV scrolling.
Cable access TV.
Yeah, the school committee was here that night, they talked about it.
And the school committee.
Superintendent.
And then the second part is whether we're going to do it again, so we should talk about that, whether we can do something else.
What's the town paper? What papers?
It was in the Webster Times.
It was?
Yes.
Oh, well, I, I'm sorry.
I see, I see some people saying yes, some people saying no, we will confirm that fact.
Okay.
That was our, that was our belief.
Would you entertain the possibility of doing it over? And the other thing I noticed, watching it on YouTube, the type was so small on that overhead that I don't think anyone in the audience could read those numbers.
We, did we handle that? Was that part of the, oh, no, okay, so we got to get that out there too, okay. So, we'll, we'll confirm if we can pull off another date.
And how will you get the word out?
Mary, I listen about seven different ways, I might be wrong about the paper, but I'm pretty sure about the rest of them.
I think I was quoted in the paper a few times, Mr. Chairman, about the forum and the date.
We'll, we'll confirm that as well. Any, any methods that you suggest?
I would say the Webster Times.
Okay.
Because it's in every single person's mailbox on Thursday.
Those that subscribe, sure, I agree.
Okay, I think that would be, because this is important, and once people hear about it, they're kind of like aghast.
Mary, did I miss any other methods of communication that it was put out on? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay, good.
I'm very certain that it was put out in many, many, many different.
Well, I personally would like to write a letter to the editor, to the Webster Times, and I would love to be able to put that in the letter, that there will be another forum and it would be on such and such a date, and.
I'll make you, I'll make you a bet, if I can find it in the Webster Times already.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to do that? You can do whatever you want, but I, I think it was in the Webster Times, but we'll confirm.
Okay, all right.
So, whatever you do is up to you.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
Mary.
Mr. Camagnani? Early department conversation?
No, just a point of clarification, your stabilization, all of your trust accounts are interest-bearing, money market rates are what really applies. The town has the option to go for a longer window as far as investments go, your stabilization money, your capital stabilization, the education stabilization, when we get to that point, would be earning whatever the money market rate is, four-plus percent, something like that. We're not gambling with it, but it is interest-bearing.
So, Mary, there's, there's one answer. Good, thanks, Rich. Any other citizens' comments?
Hello, my name is Kathy Hurst from Camelot Circle. I can concur with Mary, I even went online and read the Webster Times article, it was on March 17, that it was the date of the Webster Times, and there was no mention of the date of the forum. Maybe it's something you were interviewed on, but they didn't get placed in the article, perhaps? I'm not sure, but it wasn't in there.
We'll confirm.
And I was at the town, the public forum, and I also agree with Mary that you couldn't see anything on the screen, it was so small and actually blurry that really all you could do was listen to what was being presented. I have placed, oh, and then when you mentioned how people get their information, and most of that is through the internet or on the computer, on your post, there are a lot of people that don't, in the town, that don't, I can't say they don't have access to it, but maybe just they don't go to it to find sources like that. I find that it just doesn't pop up, maybe if we, I don't even know if that's possible, if you had some sort of grand email notices that could go out to all the residents, I don't know. But for people at home to go to the town site and then look up government, and then look up under selectmen, and then, you know, you really have to dig, because some of that information is really embedded in there, it's not something that is front and center. And I do go to, to look on public forum as well. I belong to the Webster Oxford Dudley Thompson forum page, but that also, if something's posted, if you happen to look at it five minutes after it's been posted, it's front and center, but then if you look at it again, it gets pushed back, it's not, doesn't stay there. So, you could look all the way down, there are times I've been looking for something that was posted before and you can't see it, and.
So, I apologize, you know, we're looking at the town website right now, and that ribbon on the top, that's, that was one method, so was, was that right on the main page?
It's on the homepage, Mr. Chairman.
It's on the home.
Well, that's what I mean, but people aren't getting this information unless they say, oh, it's 6:00 in the evening, time to go on to the Dudley town site and see what's new.
This is a constant, this is a constant struggle, right?
I know.
So, if it wasn't in the Webster Times, then that was a miss, but we literally have two or three people putting it on every, every town social media presence.
Yeah.
That, as far as I, as I know, that was done, and that, you know, the expectation is, it was also in the sign up front, and.
School.
And what?
I think the school was.
Mary just said something.
The sign in the lobby, it's if you subscribe to the town website, the news alerts, when I post there, you'll get an email that it's been posted, that it's been updated, the red banner, it's their news and announcements.
All right, I think people don't even know that that's available.
All right, so we'll, let's, I don't know if, you know, maybe in this case, we can say, go to the town website, click on the.
Notify me, Mr. Chairman. If you click on either the red banner at the top, something urgent like the Prop 2.5 information, or just in general, hit notify me, which is also right at the top. You can subscribe using your email.
All right.
For any of these alerts that would be posted to any of these town boards.
Well, that would be good, because.
You could get emails that way, and if there's an alert, it'll come up.
That's right.
So, there's another way, all right.
But that doesn't help people that, I mean, some of the older people in town, they don't, they don't use.
Yeah, we'll confirm the Webster Times, but, you know, we thought putting it on the sign and all the methods, we don't.
And being at the meeting, I did get out the handouts, and the one thing that was, I just didn't feel like it was enough information to explain the difference between a debt exclusion versus a Prop 2.5 override, and then I went and I, I went to the mass.gov, mass.gov site and found a few simple things that could have been to explain to people. And another thing I, I did is I, I looked at that $360,000 house example, that would be, a house that was assessed was 360,000, would pay about $1,205 more in a year, but there was really nothing there, like, somebody might look at it, first of all, they just might look at 1,205, and they figure, okay, I'm paying that, paying that for one year, and then they don't look, oh, 360,000, how many houses in Dudley are above, way above 360,000? And so, you didn't get a breakdown of exactly, well, not exactly, I mean, I'm just doing ballpark stuff here, but to show if your house is assessed at this, and not for every, you know, by 50,000, like, if your house is assessed at 350, what your increase would be if it's assessed at 400, and so on, and I made a chart, and I'll, I'll give that to you. Basically, it's just math about, you know, taking that 400 and then timing, timing that by 316 versus $3.15. I mean, excuse me, $10.16 versus $13.15. So, then it would actually, to me, it's being more upfront, more full disclosure about what things are, so people know what they're voting for, and, and I did put that on the town forum page, but again, when I go to find it, it's lost.
Which forum?
Webster Dudley, Oxford Thompson.
A private Facebook.
Well, that's the town, yeah, right, not your site, this is.
Please don't confuse.
No.
Freelance town sites with.
Well, this is just a people's citizens' group.
Understood.
Just sending it out to the citizens' group, just so, and I'll give you.
I just don't want to portray it as the town site.
No, no, I know, they call it the town, town of, town forum, of four groups, four towns in one group, and I think that would be somehow, I would like to see people actually see what it is, rather than looking at just one example and think, you know, I don't know, I, you know.
I wondered if the assessor's office and maybe treasurer collector, can you guys work together to maybe post the?
A full chart, like.
Full chart?
Trying to think what else.
It's based on assessments, right? Mr. Sullivan.
So, for the administrator, that 360, that wasn't just a number somebody arbitrarily assigned, it had to be like.
It was the average.
Value of taxable parcels, which is not only homes, it's vacant parcels, so there had to be a reason that figure came up.
Could I, can I just approach you and just give you a couple, so you know what I, I put out, and then I'll come back here?
But, sure, just to echo what you said, Mr. Chair, I always, as Kathy says, not everyone's on social media, and I'm not, but members of our board are, so, one of them sent out a screenshot, someone put on that forum, and they literally put in the, in the forum, that the selectmen set the rate low for this year, thank you.
Oh, I.
People, because times were tough.
What I get off mass.gov.
A break, so we didn't generate enough revenue, that can't be all further from the truth. Selectmen do not set tax rate, the selectmen do not decide to raise or lower the tax rate, tax rate, except when the assessors office will state based on a formula I don't even want to begin to try to explain. So, that's your point, you go to social media, and somebody will now transfer a text saying that Mr. Sullivan said, don't get your information, but someone literally put on there that we, as a board, artificially lowered the rate to give people a break because times were tough, we didn't bring in enough revenue. You know, someone reads that, they doesn't understand the process there.
I didn't see it.
Okay, I can show it. But I'm just saying, I said it last time, I'll say it again, as Kathy's been here and Mr. Sansucci, come and get your answers, come and get your questions, call and get your answers, call the appropriate department, you can't always believe what you read, like, Kathy said something's in and it disappears.
What the assessment would be, present taxes.
It's not the best place to get the accurate information.
I think you're going to like the next part of the.
Unless it's a cut and paste of something that we put out, like, if someone cuts and paints this chart, you back that up, we did it, somebody did it in the town. So, just come get the information from the appropriate source, this is a big question.
Okay, so I have a formal ask for the assessors' office and the town treasurer collector to put together the official, you know, valuation, so I believe the average was picked because there are houses that are less expensive, which isn't shown here, so I wouldn't want to show this chart, right? Because there are houses that'll.
Well, someone else.
We'll do a impartial, based on the average, what is the actual spread going to look like for people?
Someone else did post some, I just tried to not make it too long, but someone started at 150.
Well, if you only post the high ones.
Well, this went below what you said, 360, so I was just trying to show that those people that would be experiencing more than $1,205 increase, and just as an aside, anybody we've been meeting, and my husband, I think met about 12 random people, you know, at the grocery store, at the bank, walking their dog, just random, and hello, you, you live in Dudley, yes, do you know anything about the Prop 2.5 override? The what? What is that? No, there's so many people that don't even know what is happening, and I understand you have these resources available for people to go to, which is great, but I don't know how many people go to them, unless, and the email thing now is a great way, I think people have to be educated about that so that they do get personal notice of things, but the only way I found out about the meeting, the forum, public forum, was because someone else had posted something that they had seen, and when I went to go look for it anywhere, you know, it wasn't anywhere, so I just hope that you can incorporate some of this information. I know we didn't have a town meeting, we had a public forum, but we didn't have our standard spring town meeting where some of these things could have been expressed and discussed among a larger group of people, and I don't know how else to get the word to them, but to come to you and to ask for help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not pertaining anything else on the agenda?
I'm the husband.
Jack.
Jack Hurst, and I do have a question about, and I, I don't know anything about, this is my first time with experiencing anything like this, but after reading up about specifics, like getting yourself a roof for a school, I thought maybe we could take that money away from this override and put it towards, and from what I've read, from the state site, that they take loans out or some kind of a grant or anything like that, what do you have for anything that can lower our tax rate with that in mind?
So, Mr. Hurst is right, it's, and we can certainly take a loan, in, in order to pay that loan off, we can do it several different ways, one can come right from the general fund budget, which we're not in a position to do, or we could, we could do a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion means that your tax rate goes up, for example, for a fire engine or a fire truck, or, you know, or a highway truck or something like that, and when that loan is paid off, the taxes, the increased tax rate goes down and it goes away, and that was discussed with the school committee to debt exclude the capital items, the roof, and the feasibility study, and the decision was ultimately made. And the decision was ultimately made that it would be in the town's better interest to have the money to offset the cost of ever increasing assessments throughout the next five years, as opposed to making that a situation where the loan is paid off in three or four years. And we come back to the taxpayer and ask for additional money because we're out of money for the assessment because we had a lowered override. In 2018, we passed an override for the school district, it was expected to last three years, it lasted slightly more than three years. And I've said it before, and I, I believe to this day, the biggest mistake we made with that override is that we didn't provide for municipal expenses, we said, let's get something that'll pass, it'll be palatable to everybody. We'll see if we can get it passed, we need to ask the taxpayers for what we need as opposed to what's gonna pass. And it's, it's up to the taxpayers ultimately to vote yes or no to raise their own taxes. But you're, you are correct, and, and, and we do that routinely. We buy highway equipment, we buy fire equipment, big ticket items like fixing the roof on this building, that's all done through a, through a loan. And that's what we call debt excluded, their tax rate goes up until the loan's paid off and then it goes away.
Thank you. I have friends, they're all stressed out, I don't know how they're gonna be able to pay. Maybe there's gonna be some foreclosures, some bankruptcies. I'm okay. We're okay, but a lot of people are losing their homes. Now, can you actually say that the town of Dudley has had more foreclosures this year? Or last year or the year before? Do you see a trend going on right now? Where people can't afford to pay their homes and their mortgages?
How do we see that? Rich, do you have any information, treasurer collector?
The town of Dudley hasn't foreclosed for unpaid taxes on a home. Seven Corbin Road was the last one, maybe six years ago, something like that. That's, that's the last tax foreclosure, so it's not an apples to apples comparison. If, if there's a lien holder on a property, they always have the, the ability to go through and maintain their priority interest. The town's tax lien perfected through the assessors' tax bill would subordinate a, a bank loan. It's, it's almost set up that way specifically so that the lender would protect their own interest. You don't want to lose your home for $5,000 worth of taxes, it's a, you know, $360,000 home, so. I couldn't, I couldn't speak to bank foreclosures.
Right, but tax purposes only one.
For tax purposes only one and a unique circumstance during a, for a foreclosure pre-COVID, where you had a circumstance that was quite unique, and I'll leave it at that. The foreclosure process, just to take an extra 60 seconds, through the land court is very deliberate. It's, it's not one of these infomercials, it is deliberate. If you have someone who has passed, if you have any sort of lien holder, it's a deliberate process because the reversal is, you know, there's even a clause in there for the reversal of it. If there's a land court foreclosure, you have the ability to petition the court within a year of the judgment for its reversal. So it, it's a very deliberate process. So I, I can't speak to, to how the banks would do it, I know there's 101 requests every year for compliance. Hi, fill in the blank, which, which one of the, the board of selectmen owns a home? Yes, there's a loan on it and somebody's getting the file annually, making sure that everything is in good stead. So that, appreciate the time, I don't know what else I would add to that. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
What Rich has brought up was kind of ironic, it's, it's sad, Seven Corbin, I remember when they came in, the family came in after to take stuff out of the house, remember Seven Corbin? Came to ask them, but anyway, there's three homes going up on that one parcel. So it's unfortunate the parcel went to title, but it's a net gain for the town because they put three houses on there as opposed to one.
Sir? So I just remembered, I don't have notes, I'm just remembering, that I went on taxlien.com and I put in Dudley and I found 22 homes that were either under that taxlien.com for Dudley, 22, not just one. You can look that up yourselves.
Leans different than a foreclosure. You can have a lien.
There's bankruptcy and foreclosures.
Like Rich said, that, that could be a private lender as opposed to the town's actually taking for tax purposes, we don't take it for.
Yeah, if you get sold panels on your house, like.
Right.
And you don't pay them.
You can have a lien if you're in a car accident, your insurance don't pay enough, the person can lien your house to sue you. That's not us.
So we're not the experts at liens, sir?
And I am neither. I do have one last thing to say. After listening to your past report, you people had a, after hearing all the department heads coming forth and the FAA was sitting right here, you had John Marcy saying, I'd like to pass this, in your words, whatever they were, and somebody seconded it. And then there was a, wait a minute, there was a lady that came up and said, your line item was $5,000 off. And the FAA went back and forth and you guys finally, from the FAA voted on it. But you never went back and as a governing body, according, I think, to the Massachusetts state law, go over and accept it one more time. So I don't know if you need to do that again.
We'll check, thank you.
So this next election would have been probably an illegal election.
We'll check, thank you.
I just had a terrific idea, in terms of communication. Do you remember the sign, the portable sign on wheels the fire department had? That was the best piece of communication this town ever had, what happened to it?
The last time you asked me to use it, we still have it, I couldn't use it, they were using it for road work, because they were paving streets in town.
Well, what does one of those cost?
I don't know, 30, 40,000, but I will tell you.
No, 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 I'm talking about the one with the little wheels that you had in front of the fire station, they used to advertise your flower sales and stuff.
Yeah, those are, those are at least 20 grand anyway, they're expensive.
Really? Well, it worked.
Apply to Janet Maysler for a signed board for front of the.
Oh, the Malta Trust, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was terrific, do you remember it in front of the fire station? You could read it from a half a mile away, the one that's on the lawn here?
Well, we can.
Not so much.
I can put it back up, but I applied for one, for a grant for one, it's like in front of the town hall to put in front of the fire station because I think you could be able to read that better because everybody stops at the intersection.
Exactly.
So I have to submit that grant, but that's due in Friday, I'm just finishing it up and I will submit it. But in the meantime, we can put the highway sign back out there if they have previous meetings. If they have subsequent meetings coming up or.
I think that would be terrific.
Or key dates to remember, we could put something like that up.
Exactly.
With the administrator and the board.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, sorry, I just thought of something that I wanted to say before. Included in that information where people can see what their assessment would be and their present tax, the future tax, the difference. I had gotten up, gotten up at the forum and said it's over 25% increase and it was, it was actually 32.8% closer to 33% increase, and I think that's another thing that people should be aware of. And I checked the Webster Times again on the phone online, it's not in there. You mentioned the April 25th date, but there was nothing about the forum.
Yeah, I just pulled it up as well and I'm dissecting, even on the, the page, the back page, I'm not, I see a lot of discussion, but.
I know, I know, so.
We'll, we'll keep looking, make sure.
We'll have to have a plane fly over with a, a sign or something, right, thank you.
Thank you all, anyone else's comments? Seeing none, move on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody's on the same track in terms of providing additional information, so I'd like to use my time to kind of go over a few slides that will put more perspective, I think, out there in terms of where Dudley stands in terms of its overall assessments in comparison to other cities and towns in our area. Mr. Chairman, this, these additional slides are based on data from the DOR. Um, I put, what follows is five, five slides after this, which I'm hoping will help residents better understand where Dudley gets its revenue and help residents better understand how Dudley's revenue sources compare to bordering towns in FY23. So in order to measure where we stack up in our ability to pay municipal bills, we need to take a look at the costs in the area and, and the budgets compared to towns that we're surrounded by. I'm hoping to help residents better understand Dudley's revenue sources compared to other towns if the override vote passes. And then finally, help residents better understand how Dudley's budget, tax rates and revenues will compare to other towns in FY24 based on what is known now in FY23. So in Massachusetts, there are several main categories of funding sources for municipalities. There's the property tax levy, that's the tax levy that's collected by billing a town's taxable real estate and personal property, that's what we've been discussing during citizens comments tonight. However, the total town tax levy is limited by Proposition 2 and 1/2 law that it's constrained town property tax levies since fiscal year 1982, and so what does that mean? That means that if we have a rate of $10.16 per thousand, so if you have a $400,000 house, it's a very simple calculation, you multiply that by $10.16. The following year, that can never rise beyond 2 and 1/2%, and that's controlled by either controlling the property value or the tax rate itself, but either way, it can never raise beyond 2 and 1/2% unless there is something that's debt excluded, which is the loan we were talking about. A short-term loan, a long-term loan to pay off a school building, to pay for a vehicle or something like that. State aid is another thing that we consider part of the category for funding sources for municipal budgets. There's Chapter 70, which is a formula that we've gone over a few times. It's a confusing formula even for us to understand on a, on any normal level. It takes a lot of different things into consideration, but it's essentially the formula that's used to determine how much the state is going to provide, in this case, to our regional school district in the form of student aid. And if you look at the bar charts that we've seen a few times in the past several weeks, they've been relatively steady over the past several years. Dudley hasn't gained much of anything, Charlton hasn't gained much of anything. It's a level-funded state aid where everyone knows in their own homes and our own budgets attack that costs go up. And no one's more sensitive to that than I am or this board, I think. There's also unrestricted general government aid, the school, school choice, state-owned land and veterans benefits. So veterans benefits are generally reimbursable at a certain rate. It doesn't go in and it can only be used towards veterans benefits, so that doesn't necessarily benefit the overall general budget, but it does benefit the veterans. Um, there's not a lot of state-owned land that, in, in town that, that generates any revenue for us. Um, school choice turns a small profit per pupil, as far as I understand. So when, for example, if a, if a student were to come from Southbridge into our district or Webster, there would be a per capita cost per student plus an additional amount. It's this very small profit that the school district is able to realize through school choice. Um, some other sources include the Mass School Building Authority, which is what we're talking about now with the feasibility study. The school administrators mentioned to us on several occasions that they've applied several times to gain funding to either rebuild or refit or further develop the high school, which is, I think was built in 1974. And when your number comes up from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, that means that that, that project is in line for a certain amount of forgiveness towards that loan and a certain contribution towards that loan from the state. So that's why we have a feasibility study that the school district would like to move forward on. Because if we miss that, the money goes along to another district that is ready to go. Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education provides some funding towards the school system. The MWRA doesn't really apply to us too much. And Chapter 90, which is from Mass DOT, that's another source of local aid where we pay for the repair and of our, and other eligible projects through our front road infrastructure and transportation infrastructure. This next slide shows Dudley's ability to rely on commercial and industrial taxes versus residential. Dudley has, another source of income is commercial and residential and industrial for towns and cities similar to Dudley. As everyone knows, Dudley has no major routes that make it attractive to commercial and industrial development. We don't have Route 20, it's not a good location for an Amazon Supercenter, it's not a great location for Home Depot or Walmart. We don't have 395, we don't have 290, we don't have Route 16. We don't have the infrastructure and the transportation infrastructure that make Dudley attractive to businesses, industrial and commercial, that would want to relocate here, that could contribute to our commercial and industrial levy. And the taxation portion of Dudley's budget is minimally funded, 6.8% by commercial, industrial and personal taxes, and it relies heavily on residential taxes, 93% of our taxes, our tax levy comes right from residents, doesn't come from, doesn't come from businesses. The fact is that the portion of Dudley's budget that is derived from taxes is nearly $10 million lower on average than the next lowest tax levy, which is Southbridge. So if you look at the chart below in yellow, highlighted, it shows the commercial and industrial levy for our bordering towns. In Charlton, there's a commercial levy of 1.2 million and industrial levy of 2.4. Southbridge is 1.9 and the industrial is 1.1. In Oxford, the commercial is 2 and your industrial is 2 as well. In Webster, it's 3 and industrial is 452. In comparison, the commercial levy in Dudley is 370,000, industrial is 298. It's not even in the same ballpark as our bordering, as, as our neighbors, 6.82%. If you look all the way to the right, commercial, industrial property taxes percentage of the levy, I'm sorry, personal taxes percentage of levy, it's 6.82%. The next lowest is 14%, meaning that Webster, the next lowest, 14% of their budget is coming from commercial, industrial or personal property tax levy. Goes up to 18, 19% and upwards, it's 22% in Charlton. So when you look at the total tax levies, 29 million in Charlton, 24 million in Southbridge, 27 million in Oxford, 28 million in Webster. In comparison, 14. In comparison, fourteen million in Dudley. And I, I bring this up because the cost of electricity, the cost of a fire truck, the cost of, of a ton of road salt, it all costs the same in this area. It's, we don't get a Dudley discount, it's not any cheaper for us to operate in Dudley than it is in Charlton, Southbridge, Oxford, or Webster. But we do so with a fourteen-million-dollar overall tax levy, as opposed to a maximum of twenty-nine million dollar total tax levy in a district that we share with Charlton. Source of revenue that make up a town's annual budget. This chart shows the tax levy from the previous slide for Dudley and bordering towns and compares the other sources of revenue that make up the overall budget. Dudley and Charlton state aid amounts are minimal in comparison to Southbridge, Webster, and Oxford. The common factor here is Dudley and Charlton, we're very similar communities, very similar incomes and so forth. We don't qualify for a lot, a lot of aid. We're not overly wealthy, and we're not overly poor. So if you take a look at local receipts such as fees, licensing, inspections, fines, other revenues such as cannabis, land lease, they're also minimal between the two towns in our shared school district. If you look at Southbridge with a twenty-four-million-dollar tax levy, thirty-one million dollars in state aid. Webster, twenty-eight million-dollar tax levy, twenty million dollars in state aid. Oxford, twenty-seven tax levy, thirteen million in state aid. Charlton, twenty-nine million, one-point-seven, which is slightly lower than ours in state aid. But what does that all translate down to? Look at local receipts and other revenues. Look at the, look at the bottom line. Head and shoulders, every other bordering town is way above and beyond what Dudley generates in revenue outside of its, of its tax levy. So Dudley has a limited ability to offset its residential tax rate, which means as much as we don't want to raise taxes, or even propose raising taxes, don't forget, everyone at this table plays, pays taxes, just like everyone that we're suggesting vote to increase their own taxes does. Dudley has a limited ability to offset its residential tax rate with a commercial or industrial tax base, and that's just the plain old facts. Dudley has the lowest tax rate of any bordering town by far. Dudley receives substantially less state aid, yet has the lowest average single-family tax bill by an average of one-thousand dollars less than the other bordering towns, with substantially higher state aid numbers on top of a higher tax rate. So if you look at the current residential tax in Southbridge, fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents per thousand. Oxford, thirteen dollars and sixty-four cents per thousand, this is FY twenty-three. Webster, twelve dollars and fifty cents per thousand, Charlton, twelve dollars and seventeen cents per thousand. Average single-family values, we're pretty close to Oxford and Webster. Three-sixty-five average in Webster, three-fifty-two average in, in Oxford. However, thirteen-sixty-four in Oxford for residential tax rate, twelve-fifty in Webster for residential tax rate. And a single-family tax bill in Southbridge, Oxford, Webster, and Charlton, this is based on the average single-family value. That, that was the formula I mentioned, you take the residential tax rate and you multiply it by the value of your home to get the total, is the right, right to what you, you'd be paying for taxes. Southbridge has four-thousand-dollar, five, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-twelve-dollar for single-family tax bill. Oxford has a four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eleven single-family tax bill. Webster has a four-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight single-family tax bill. And Charlton is four-thousand-seven-ninety-three, single-family tax bill. And here's Dudley with no ability to tax industrial, commercial. We have no, no ability to raise a lot of money in, in that manner. And here's Dudley with the lowest tax rate of all the surrounding towns. On average, a thousand dollars less than the next lowest tax bill, with an income per capita, which is similar to Oxford, Webster. It, it's, it's, it's in the pile, the only one with the, with the, with a larger income per capita measurable is Charlton. And we propose a thousand-dollar less of a tax break on average for single-family tax bills, without the ability to raise the money any other way. If the override passes, the premise here is that Dudley can't afford to provide adequate services with no other means to offset the costs required to maintain them. It is expensive for Dudley to buy goods and services as it is in bordering towns. Dudley has to tax at a reasonable rate to pay for reasonable costs. The override provides a thoughtful solution to a problem that is simple to understand. We have the lowest tax rate of any bordering town, the lowest single-family tax bill on average, and no other, no other way to offset industrial, commercial tax levy, to offset those costs, to keep those residential tax rates the lowest in the area, but yet we still do. And so that's the very simple explanation to the problem we face. Dudley is proposing in FY twenty-four to come more into line with the other municipalities in FY twenty-three. We're proposing a single, a residential tax rate of thirteen-fifty in comparison to Oxford, which is thirteen-sixty-four, or Southbridge at fifteen-eighty-four, slightly higher than Webster, and higher than Charlton. That brings the single-family tax bill in line with about what Oxford is paying within sixteen, sixty-one bucks of what Oxford is paying. It's in line with Webster, it's all over four-thousand dollars. Four, four-thousand-seven-ninety-three in Charlton. Again, with no commercial or industrial tax levy ability. And that brings our total budget in comparison, that's what we used to pay for our schools, for our municipal services and everything else, that brings our total budget, if the override passes at that rate with that single-family tax bill, it brings our total budget to twenty-five million, four-twenty-seven. That is thirteen million dollars lower than, than Charlton is in FY twenty-three, and it's more than, it's less than fifty percent of all the other bordering towns. That's fifty percent of the ability to run municipal services at adequate levels like the rest of the towns for half the cost with the override passing. So I, I put that together, Mr. Chairman, just to give it, give everyone an example and an idea as to the challenge that Dudley's facing to keep a reasonable request to the taxpayer on April twenty-fifth. Not a greedy request, not something that's high-in-the-sky request. It's a request that keeps us functioning at adequate levels to provide town services and educational services at a very conservative level. I'm happy you haven't answered any questions.
Any questions for town administration from the board?
Not really a question, Mr. Chair, but just to be clear, that last slide, which shows thirteen-fifty, which would be the new tax rate if the override passes. The other four towns that Mr. Ruder presented, their figures are showing FY twenty-three, which are in now. So logical assumption, they're, they're restricted at two and a half like the rest of us. I don't believe any of those towns are proposing overrides, they could be doing debt exclusions we don't know about. Those numbers that we're compared to, which puts us right in the middle, those other four towns are probably going to go up between two and two and a half percent, which is their cap. When you factor that in, we will no longer be in the middle, but I would submit that those other numbers would jump us, jump above us, would probably drop to at least fourth, maybe even fifth again. But as he said, it's not an unreasonable request. But I just want people that look at this slide to say, boy, we're right, but right smack in the middle. Those are based on our numbers next year, these other four towns are this year, pre-increase. Those numbers will be, those numbers will be changed as of July first, when the new fiscal year kicks in. Again, that thirteen-fifty will obviously be lower than thirteen-sixty-four, the fifteen-eighty-four, and I submit that the other will probably be fourth place with me where we be.
Mr. Mars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've been pretty consistent about when we're up here, we're not necessarily advocating for this either way. Mr. Hurst, you know, mentioned that I voted to pass this. No, I made a motion to put it on the ballot, to, to make the voters decide, right? So I just want to clarify that. I also have been very consistent with saying, you have to tell somebody something five to seven times before they understand, you know, or really this sinks in. We live this every day, Mr. Chairman. We, we've been all the meetings and everybody in this town hall that, that see these and understand and have internalized these numbers. It is not lost on me that, you know, the last time we did this override, which was a hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars, if I recall, we had three meetings with the school. Before I came into this meeting, I said to these guys in the other room, we need to have more meetings to do this, because not everybody saw it the first time. You know, Kathy, I, you posted it three times, and not a lot of anybody really liked, liked it or saw it because of the scroll factor, but you, you tried. We talked about being as transparent as we could ever be here, and this is, this is a great presentation that Jonathan put together. This is another thing that we could put forth. The Abrams group put out a great presentation. I mean, the school drives most of this override request, everybody understands that, right? Based on what the state tells us the assessments need to be and, and what the school committee voted for to, to put forward. Us up at the board here, we want to make sure that, you know, that the municipality has, has the money it needs to operate, and because we budget from a bottoms-up standpoint. We never go over what we need to do. And, and that's based on what, you know, the, the schools need from us, based on what they voted and what the state told them that they, we need to give them. We can't do that anymore. So my point is, we need to, and I would like to ask the town administrator to work with the school to, to create some new other meetings while we continue to get the word out. We have a month, we have a month. It's not just to throw it out there once and everybody understands it, it's, it's not how it works, right? I want this stuff everywhere. Like, I was at the meeting the other night with my daughter, sitting in the front row, and there was a handout, but the Abrams presentation wasn't printed out. School, they just didn't, didn't get printed. And there's a lot of good information in there, they put a lot of work into that. It, the numbers are stark. But if we're gonna, like, ask people, I guess, again, I'll say it again, I think I've said it like every meeting for, for two months now, this, this, this stuff has to be everywhere, has to be talked about everywhere. And, you know, and, and the reasoning on why we, it got submitted the way it did, right? Five to seven times before things get internalized in business and, and personal life, that's how it works, right? So I would like to see more listening sessions, and I call them listening sessions. We're not, we're, we want everybody, we're asking people to make this decision. That's always how we've, we've done, we've handled these debt exclusions and overrides. Give people the information they need to make an informed decision, and that's what we're gonna do. And we're gonna be transparent, we're gonna have it everywhere, in every method, every media, everything, so people can do that. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see some, at least two more, at least one, you know, maybe two listening sessions. We did three for a hundred-and-fifty thousand in twenty-eighteen, because I was at them. Thank you.
So wrapping up the conversation about the budgeting process and the potential for changes and the vote in April, got a few action items that let's just get on the record, so that's okay. One was confirmed with Town Communications about Webster Times. As mentioned, I read the article again, well, scanned the article, let's do a full deep dive. Has to be in the Webster Times. We've discussed about other listening sessions, so let's see if we can orchestrate one of those, at a minimum one, to Mr. Marsi's point. We need to confirm the procedural work from the last couple of meetings. And then, we gotta get those Abrams slides with font that we can read. I got someone echoing in my ear saying, here saying, I want C, C-suite slides so that it's, it's clear.
Bullet points, right?
So we'll do that, those are, those are the actions I got. Any other questions for town administrator before we move on? Seeing none. What's the procedure here? Pass to just comments?
Is it germane to what we?
Is it germane to that conversation we just had?
Yes.
Okay, come on.
Yes, it's about the budget costs. Over the past couple of years, was the COVID relief fund money, whatever they call it, did that have any impact on monies that were used for hires, for instance? That now that that money has gone away, this is, you're trying to find a way to keep those positions, or?
We're actually, Mr. Chairman, lighter five positions than before the pandemic. The COVID money has been, the CARE Act, the Antiarpa funds have been applied directly to the last several years when, you know, in the middle of pandemic, we certainly couldn't try an override vote. And so we've used that money in the last several years to keep the town budget and the school assessments stable.
In the light of the budget concerns, why have there been new hires within the past few weeks?
They're not new positions, there have been positions that cover three or four departments where, for example, in, in the land use department, that was one of the efficiencies that we got during COVID. She covers, she covers highway, conservation, planning, and a few other things, some HR functions as well.
How about in other departments, like the police department or the schools, were there new positions that were implemented?
Well, I can't answer for the schools. I think the police department is on the same par right now that it was at the time that COVID, the pandemic, prior to the pandemic.
So we just, we just noticed that there were new positions people were being put into, and I just wondered if that's why the budget is so high.
Mr. Chairman, through the pandemic, we had a, a hiring freeze. And only until recently, that freeze was not expanded to public safety, and the proviso was that if it was to replace an existing position in public safety, then it was permissible, and that's, that's what happened with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onto new business. Black Tavern, permission to use the town common on Saturday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as well as permission for a parking waiver on both sides of Center Road for the tenth annual craft fair. Anyone from the Black Tavern here? Mr. Bazanet, would you like to come up and tell us about it?
It will happen. Well, it, it will happen, and we are requesting the usual.
Sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Permissions.
Pardon? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, Ed Bazanet, Director in Black Tavern.
Thank you. So Chief and Chief, no issues with? Any, Mr. Marsi?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we give the Black Tavern permission to use the town common on Saturday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, as well as permission for a parking waiver on both sides of Center Road for the tenth annual craft fair.
My second.
Any discussion? Always a great event, much appreciated. All right, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Bazanet. Next new business, formal complaint. The Board, he has formal complaint from the Historical Commission against Town Building Commissioner and Fire Chief Relative Maze Adhesive Demolition. Can we first hear from the complainant, please, and state their case?
You want me here or there?
Where are you most comfortable with? If you have papers to open up, maybe the, maybe the table would be better, if?
Well, hearing is, is my biggest issue. I mean, hearing's zip back there. I'll try it down here. I get the town administrator's voice good. Sully, not so good.
First time someone's ever said that.
It is, it really is. It's you, Sully. All right, here's, here's my problem. The Historic Commission is a, I'm not funded, I was peopled by non-paid actors. We do it because we love the town, and we've been, most of us on this commission, doing it for a long time. It's difficult right now because we're trying to bring in some younger people, and it's almost impossible. The land out there is, nobody's interested, nobody wants to get involved, there's too much going on on television or whatever. Times have changed, and we know that. One of the things, though, that we did and we enjoyed doing is protecting old properties, making sure they just don't disappear. And 13 years ago or so, we had the demolition delay bylaw. We spent a lot of time on it. We put it together, and it works fairly well. I mean, it's not a guarantee that places won't disappear, but it's a tool that we can use to make sure they just don't disappear overnight and nobody notices. One of the provisions in there was certainly, people, well, let me put it this way. If you were looking to demo a place, you're going to come through the building department, you're gonna get referred to us in the Historical Commission, and we're gonna weigh in on whether you fit our criteria for, okay, that, that building can go or not. And we let the building department know our piece of it, and then they deal with it. But there are times we recognize when something goes on that you just don't have the time to handle. You know, it's an emergency situation, or it's a cut-and-dried situation. For instance, the place burns down. So we had a piece in there that was designed to cover that, and it said essentially, the building department calls together the fire department and the Historical Commission, and they, those three entities interact and determine, okay, the building's gone, it's beyond saving, it needs to come down, without going through any kind of long, lengthy.
Difficult.
Demo process. Our problem was recently, we've had some issues before, but the most recent one was mace polymers burned to the ground. Horrific, no question about it. I did not receive any information from the building department, like I should have, saying, "Ed, we gotta get you out here. You know, we'll be with you, and we'll bring the fire chief, and we will assess the situation, and then we will make a determination that we don't need to go through the long process to do the demolition." Actually, nature had done most of that demolition. But it still required us to say, this wasn't, was a building, it had to be demolished, and there needs to be paperwork for it. I never got a call. I inquired after a while, saying, "Hey, what's the story? Nobody's called me." Building department didn't respond at all to that. I did see the fire chief a couple of times and asked him, and he didn't respond. And then I find, you know, it's just a question of ignoring us. They don't care. It's arrogant. It's disrespectful, and it's illegal. And that's why I'm here tonight.
Take employees by one time or both at the same time?
Your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Chief, you want to start?
Okay, yeah, let me start by, good evening. Let me start by saying, 90% of the time, I would agree with Mr. Bazanet, but I think this is a unique case. And Mr. Ruder, if you could bring up the one video?
Well, I'm gonna try to get the one video, Chief. We've got a lot of videos, but I think you meet the, are you asking for the drone footage?
Yeah, just one. But if I can talk while you're pulling it up. Now, the mace fire occurred August 18th. That was the date of the mace fire. The first time I spoke to Mr. Bazanet was October 24th, prior to the town meeting. We spoke face-to-face about it. In October 26th, I wrote a letter to Nelson, speaking of the hazardous materials issue and how we had multiple agencies involved. DEP was involved, even EPA showed up on one occasion for one day after the fire. Now, they're above me. They are dictating what and when happens and when it happens because there was a hazardous materials release, people's well, well water was being threatened. Turns out, there was a large PFAS relief. And there's been filters put on people's wells. I mean, the people are safe now, and it's all good, but they're gonna have to have their water tested like four times a year for the foreseeable future. And DEP and EPA, according to state and federal law, is dictating when and how things are gonna happen, which is above me. I mean, they're telling me when I'm gonna do it, and there's nothing I can do about it. And I stayed in touch with Nelson. Nelson and I have a good working relationship. I kept him in the loop, he kept me in the loop, he understood. But in this letter, I wrote, I had two excerpts from Mass General Law, Chapter 48. So Section 3 states, "Three or more firewoods present at a place which is in immediate danger from fire, or if there are not three of them present, the selectmen or the mayor and the alderman present or in their absence, two or more of the civil officers present or in their absence, two or more of the chief military officers of the place present, may direct any building to be demolished if deem it necessary to prevent the spread of fire." And then Section 4 says, "If a city by its city council or a town accepts this section or has accepted corresponding provisions of earlier laws, the official of a fire department in command at a fire shall have exclusively the power conferred by the preceding section." Now, I will refer back to town bylaw, which is home rule bylaw for the fire chief, which was approved in 2002. "It shall be the duty and responsibility of the chief," Section 26, subsection 6, Section A under that section, "to form all duties prescribed by Chapter 48 and 148 of the general laws and by the rules and regulations of the department." Now, I understand the historical value of buildings, and I'm all for it. I've publicly stated that in the past, I've stated to Mr. Bazanet. This is a totally separate incident. We had hazardous materials, chemicals, a large fire. The building was already on the ground, so, again, I don't, I don't know what we're debating here. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry to me. And I'm not gonna wait two months. I mean, we, I had an excavator up there that morning pulling the building apart while it was still on fire so they could put it out. And by comparison, not to change the subject, but just as a comparison, I had written an email on February 17th in response to the Roundhouse on Ramshorn Road. And I'm not gonna go into the whole thing, but basically, I was comparing it to mace. I said, "We should have the Historical Commission there because, in my opinion, and by what the law reads, they should be involved in that. That has historical significance. It's not an immediate threat to public health or public safety, and we should follow it up and go there and meet." But, of course, because of the mace fire, and everybody's angry and upset over nonsense, to be quite frank with you, he didn't want to meet. So now we're stuck in this conundrum. So.
All right, Exhibit A. Phone. I have this kind of phone. You know, not just a landline, but I do have a landline, too, built in suspenders. I'm available. I'm available 24 hours a day that, this way. If you're in the middle of something and saying, technically, this is what we gotta do, let's just call Ed and tell him, "Look, we're being superseded by the state," or, "There's nothing we can do here." Anything, any indication that they had a responsibility to do the bylaw as it's written? Nothing. Crickets, as we say nowadays. I asked two times, personally asked, what's going on? Zip. That's not the way I should be treated. That's not the way the Historical Commission should be treated. I'm, I, that's what's upsetting to us. We're just being, I, I can understand the situation. Building's on the ground, we've done that before. It's easy. All right. So you go to this other one, the Roundhouse. They want me to show up at a meeting with the new owner of the Roundhouse. Sully, you love this one because you know how long it takes us to do a public hearing. And we go through the process, and people get upset, and they go to you and say, "Hey, the Historical Commission's holding us up. We can't demo till we get the, get this done." And we do hold them up through the period where we need to do it. It's a public hearing, it has to be posted. So I said, "No, I'm not going to talk to a new owner of a very important structure in the town and discuss anything with them. They can apply for a demo permit, and then the process begins, and it's a public hearing. It's not an emergency, it's not coming down tomorrow." I'm not going to talk to people in advance and say, "Well, you could do it this way or you could do it that way." There's one procedure. Fill out the form and go through everything that everybody else went through. So we're trying here, as a commission, to uphold what we've been told to do, to the letter of the law. We understand there are things, you know, that come up. A phone call, I would've said, "Just do what you gotta do. I'll be up, I'll be up there, I'll just take a look at it, we'll send you a letter, and you're cleared, and we're done." Not a problem. But you can't, you can't let it go for months and months. I mean, it was, it was just done without us. And no apology, no attempt to respond to my inquiries, like, "What's going on?" No reach out. That's not the way we used to do business in this town.
Do we have the video ready?
You want to hear from Nelson, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was just hoping we had an action to watch the video, and I don't know if our internet downloaded yet.
Before we do, could I show you something that's as far as 69 Ramson? Because Mr. Bazanet's saying a lot of things.
Why don't you introduce yourself and come and sit down, please? Thank you.
Nelson Burlingame, I'm the building inspector in town. I have pictures here of 69 Ramson. I wasn't even gonna bring it up, but my opinion is, that building should be tore down, too. And if you don't go to see a building, how can you be standing here and saying it doesn't need to come down?
We go to see the building.
And you wouldn't go see, and you wouldn't go see the building, that's the problem.
I'm gonna do one at a time, and let's show the respect of being able to say something. Let's be calm and backface, please.
I'd like to present these as evidence, the building. I took the pictures of these buildings today, and the Board can, you know, look at them and, I guess, make a decision whether they feel the building should come down or not, but that building is pretty bad.
This Board does not determine that, but Nelson.
This is inappropriate.
Is it in terms of the mace, specifically mace?
Rep.
Or it was reference other buildings, as you mentioned, Mr. Bazanet?
The only reason the other one got pulled in was.
It's 69.
So it's one of the other issues that you mentioned?
It's the mace building issue.
And you mentioned this other building?
I, I did, I'm sorry. I just used it as a comparison because I feel mace was an emergent situation, and the Roundhouse wasn't. I apologize for that, but.
I can look at the pictures, but if it's not a mace, it's just interesting.
Is this straight office?
This is just wasting our time.
I think my recommendation would be to limit this to mace and mace only.
All right, let's keep it to the discussion to mace. Any, Nelson, any comments about mace?
As you know, mace building burned to the ground. I think, to me, the demolition law, the intent is for buildings that have significance. I didn't see any as far as mace goes. I, I didn't see any purpose or reason that the Historical Society had to be informed of the mace building. And that's my stance then, that's my stance now. So.
Okay. Any last retorts?
He has never understood the bylaw. He never will understand the bylaw. Every building, every demo has to have a process to go through. The determination of historic interest is done by the commission. We respond back to the building department and say, "It is or it is not." If it is, and then we enjoin it for a year of delay, that's another process that goes in. But he doesn't get to decide what's historic. He can say it's an old building, sure, and he thinks it's falling down the shore. The decision is made by the Historical Commission whether to proceed that way.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ruder?
At the end, I have a few sentences from our, from Town Council relative to emergency demolition, and who determines what, according to our voicemail.
Let me, what's the Board's pleasure? Do we hear that first or questions from the Board?
Give the legal statement first.
I think, I would think, yeah.
You want to hear the legal statement from?
Yeah, because I have some questions that might be answered when they read the statement.
All right, that's fair. Mr. Ruder, could you go through that first? I missed the video.
I, I think I can put it back. You want to watch the video?
It's up top, the ones where it's on fire.
Well, we know it burnt down, I just.
Yeah, we know it burned down.
I thought we put the end result of it. Do you want me to put the?
Well, I just want people to get a feel for what we were dealing with so they know the significance of the call.
So I'll start with the legal.
Yeah.
You can go back to that if.
Do we have a copy of that?
We do, but it's multitasking. Multitasking. Okay. All righty, here it comes. Here's the demolition bylaw. And I'm happy to read it as the Board is reading it, Mr. Chairman, so that people at home may have an easier time of it.
Reading it with a different viewpoint, understanding of this. Just blow it up a little, maybe? We don't want to have another presentation of the legible font, right? Control plus. Control plus.
Yeah, now I can use the screen, Mr. Chairman. A little delay.
So, as we're scanning the bylaw, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the building inspector a question?
Yes.
Nelson, under Section A of the bylaw, anytime after inspection, the inspector shall determine that the structure poses imminent threat to public health, safety of the community under 147-7D, advises the commission in writing.
No.
No? That, I'm just trying to figure out what, what, I thought this had imminent threat to public health and safety. Was that the determining factor to proceed with the course of action?
Yes, well, the fire chief had, had started pulling apart that night or that morning.
Based on his statutory authority by the state?
Right, right. But I also have a statutory authority that allows me to do that. It's, um, it's one, MGO 148, six through 11 or 12, I think. It is, it gives me a procedure where, where a building like that can be tore down. And it has nothing to do, matter of fact, it's in our bylaw that says it overrides the Historical Society, basically. If it, if it, in conflict, I've got it here somewhere, right?
A state reg like that would supersede a local regulation anyway, right?
We'd have to see the...
Uh, what it is, "Nothing in this section shall be inconsistent with the procedures for the demolition or securing a building or features established by 143, Section 6 through 12." It's under the demolition bylaw, Section 147-7, uh, F. And that's what I used.
Okay. Get off the next page of that, yeah?
If I can, of the bylaw, I can, I can...
It's like the second page of the, well, maybe the, I don't know, fourth page, fifth page or something.
Of the town bylaw.
Of the town bylaw. So it clearly says I can do it and override the Historical Society. And I, and don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to, I'm a buil, I was a builder in Chatham, asked, in Chatham, I, I repaired, uh, historical buildings, I took many of them, never tore them down, because I love history. I love buildings, I love old Sturbridge Village. To me, if you don't have the oldness in a town, you might as well be in California with all the new houses. So I disrespect no one until they disrespect me. And I feel I've been disrespected by this gentleman next to me, and many, many times he has. Usually, when I went out in the earlier days, um, I, the one that was deceased there, what his name, Feneth, Beneth, Beneth there, we had a very, very, very good relationship. I went out there every time and seen every building. And the Round building, when I asked him to go see the Round building, he, he just, "No, I won't do it. The building is, is, is in disarray, it's really bad, it should be tore down." Not the subject tonight. It should be the subject, though.
It should be, and it should go through a permitting process. I don't go out before the permit.
All right, so I've already mentioned it once. We're not going to go back and forth. We're going to go one at a time and be respectful. Last time. All right, so 147-7? F. F. I'm looking, I'm trying to...
That was next in line to queue for... It was Town Council relative to that.
Right. That goes, that goes back to the question. That one says, "Commissioner has to receive it in writing." Right. Did that happen? No, the other question was, and posed, and said, "No." But...
But I'm saying, Section F, so concede that.
Yeah, I understand. We're just, we're going backwards again, because we're finishing up 146. The one that was just up. So where it says, "The legal counsel agrees that it has to be imminent safety threat and in writing to the commission," sorry, the Historical Commission. Now I'd like to see 147... Nelson, what was it, 147-7?
Um, 143, Section 6 through 12 outlines, it outlines what I can do as being a building inspector with the Building Code as far as demolition is concerned.
I found it on ecodotcom, though. Is that a legit site?
Yeah.
All right. I won't make you read it. Too bad Kerry's not here. 147-7, emergency demolition. If a building or structure poses an immediate threat to the public health or safety due to its deteriorate, here we go, condition. The owner of such a building or structure may request issuance of an emergency demolition permit from the building inspector. Uh, I'm assuming the owner didn't ask for permission?
No. Neither did the fire department, but that's...
So that's an emergency application. The building inspector shall five, have five days, transmit a copy thereof to the Historical Commission. We know that didn't happen. And then, practical 14 days after receipt, does an application, five days after inspection. All right, so this, this isn't relative...
You're looking at 146, that's six through 10, because one of those says that you can...
You mentioned 147-7, so I'm just going through it, I'll make sure there's what it says. All of it says, "Historical Commission, Historical Commission, Historical Commission."
Oh, you're looking at our bylaws, or you're looking at MGL?
I'm looking at 147-7.
Because I'm saying 143 MGL. But it's, but it, it refers to it in our bylaw.
It's Mass General Law.
It's Mass General Law.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll get there. I'm just looking at one reference at a time. 147-7 was referenced. And I'll look at the other one. Uh... All right, let's see. All right, Section 147-7D, "Within five days after inspection of the building or structure and after consultation with other members of the inspection team, the building inspector shall determine whether the condition of the building or structure represents a serious and imminent threat to public health and safety, and whether there is any reasonable alternative to the immediate demolition of the building or structure which would protect public health and safety." I'm just scanning it so I can, "If the building inspector finds that the condition of the building or structure poses a serious and imminent threat to public health and safety, and there is no reasonable alternative to the immediate demolition of the building or structure, then the building inspector may issue an emergency demolition permit to the owner of the building or structure. If the building inspector finds a condition of the building or structure does not pose a serious imminent threat to public health and safety, and there are reasonable alternatives to the immediate demolition of the building or structure which would protect public health and safety, then the building inspector may refuse to issue an emergency demolition permit to the building, owner of the building or structure. Upon issuing an emergency demolition permit, under the provisions of this section, the building inspector shall submit a brief written report to the commission describing the condition of the building or structure and the basis for his or her decision to issue an emergency demolition permit." All right, so that, that one goes back and forth, right? The owner could have asked an, asked for an emergency demolition permit from the building inspector. But that did not happen. All right, so what was the, um...
143.
Nelson, it was 143...
MGL 143, six through 10. And it basically, part of it says that the town can hire, you know, we, you know, you can hire employees to have it taken down if it's an immediate danger. But in this case, this one was already taken down anyway, so it's like, none of this really pertains to that particular situation. It is unique, like the fire chief said. He made a decision with, with other people at that time at the property. By the time I got there, it was already taken down, it was burnt. There's nothing significant. Uh, I believe the Historical Society is supposed to show me where the significance of the building is, and there's none there because it's burnt. So to me, none of this pertains. So...
All right, so I'm going to look up, uh, MGL 143, Section 6 through 10.
Yeah.
Section 6, "The local inspector immediately upon being informed by a report or otherwise that a building or other structure or anything attached there to or connected there with in that city or town is dangerous to life or limb, or that any building in that town or city or town is unused, uninhabited, or abandoned, and open to the weather, shall inspect the same, and he shall forthwith in writing notify the owner unless he or mortgaged in possession or moved or make it safe." So that's not necessarily emergency. It was definitely unsafe. So let's look at the next one. Next is removal and making structure safe. It requires a notification by 12 o'clock noon of the day following the service of the notice, so there would have to be a notice issued. So that didn't happen here, so that doesn't, it's not relevant. Section 8, "If an owner lets he or mortgaged in possession of unsafe structure refuses or neglects to comply," and that's, uh, that's different, then the town would take over. Dangerous or abandoned structures removed or made safe? That's after notifying the owner and going through different processes, so I don't see Section 9A, I don't see anything. Let's do it, injuries. Section 10 is about, "In possession of aggrieved by such an order or remedy prescribed by Section 2, Chapter 1, 39." There's all like a due process with the owners that don't help you out with the process.
It's not our contention that we determine that the building, um, is structurally sound or not. We are just supposed to be in the loop and assisting in this.
And so I'm just confirming the, the different roles, and then Chief, you cited...
Well, I just wanted to, are you all set? I don't want to talk out of turn.
No, I need, you cited a, um, was it state law or rural regulation?
Yeah, I have, when the building's on fire, I exclusively have the power to determine if it's coming down to prevent the spread of fire, which I did, before any of these other departments were involved.
I understand. Can you just read chapter and verse, please?
You want me to read the whole thing again?
Uh, the pertinent parts, or I will for you, if you want.
Well, no, like, Section 3 just goes through the whole thing with councilmen and selectmen, and then Section 4 says, "If a city by its city council or a town accepts this section or has accepted corresponding provisions of earlier laws, the official of the fire department in command at a fire shall have exclusively the power conferred by the preceding section." And then I have Home Rule bylaw, which was approved by a town meeting in 2002, when you hired your first full-time fire chief to accept all provisions of Chapter 48 and Chapter 148.
All right, thank you. Any questions for anyone here tonight from the board?
I just have a simple question. Hope I speak loud enough. I just want to ask the fire chief and the building inspector, it was on their, they're both gentlemen, I have a lot, a world of respect for both of them. There was not an intent at any point, not during the incident, not, not after the incident, was controlled, nothing was done in like a malice to not loop in Mr. Bazinet and Historical Commission?
Can I speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
Chief?
I, I'll be honest with you, I wasn't even thinking about that. That never even came into my mind. It's, my, my priority is public health and public safety.
Right. And Nelson, I...
I, can I say, I think this delay law refers to significant buildings. This is not a significant building. I don't see how it relates to where they should be informed. I, I agree with the chief, I felt the same way.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
And I, I'm not trying to oversimplify anything, I'm not trying to, I'm not casting blame, aspersions. I've been through, as Mr. Bazinet said, a ton of public hearings that get heated, permitting processes have all been involved. It appears to me, the fire chief acted, obviously, in the moment, for public safety, to the best of his ability, to control, contain, and put the fire out. And then subsequent action with the PFAS, as he said, he stayed, he had an excavator up there as fast as he could. He was on scene all night, wasn't like he went home and came back. Nelson, I believe, issued his ruling based on the statutory authority granted to him. Looking at the email chain that I was provided, I don't know if these are all the emails, there's some dates in here, November 15th, we need to meet, can we talk about, you know, I'm paraphrasing. It, it appears to me, at post, the incident being contained to the best of our professionals' abilities, that Mr. Bazinet made it clear, he felt that communication was lacking going forward. After the incident was contained, the fire was put out, the building was down. Mr. Baz, I, unless I'm not trying to speak for you, Ed, he feels that communication, right, yeah, clearly, Amanda, you know, he needs to be in the loop, referring to Ed, I'm sure. Ed's still waiting on, for a meeting on the site. And the fire chief responded, according to the email I was looking at, the next day, I've done, Nelson, I'd done my inspection with Assistant Chief Kinesny acting on behalf of the chief. The quicker the better, we want to go up there and check it out, and let me know if there's any concerns. I, I think the scope of this, this fire was, you know, borderline disaster, could have been a disaster. And I think after everything was, the dust was settled, for the want of a better term, it appears that Mr. Bazinet feels that him, himself as chair and the Historical Commission either wasn't looped in fast enough or looped in thoroughly. My...
Not looped in at all.
Or not looped in at all. Bless you.
And I'd say ignored, because I kept asking, "What's the resolution here?"
Right, there are some emails, like I said, that I see.
Even, even if I'd gotten a call saying, you know, "We had to get it down," we understand that, not a question. Any building in, in for demolition has to go through a process in this town. Didn't matter, it doesn't, you don't know if it's significant until they've been through the commission public hearing process. So you can't say, "Hey, that wasn't a significant building." You know, you, you can't just make it up on your own. It's there. You have to follow it. Call, say, "Hey, how do we want to handle this? Let's, let's agree to it, let's discuss it." Even in, even after the fact, two months later, I still hadn't had any comment about, "This is what went on." You know, if I didn't send this in, it still wouldn't have helped.
All right, so you asked for confirmation of your summary. So you got your...
Yes, because I, I was just going to state, Mr. Chair, as opposed to any kind of malicious misconduct or malicious intent, fire chief and the building inspector, I think going forward, you as chair, working with the administrator, we need just, this was, this is different. Like, this wasn't just a building that someone wanted to raise, this was a disaster. There was stuff on the ground, leaking on the ground, DEP was involved, chief's quoting state law, Nelson. I just think going forward, there's going to be a better manner of communication, if that's, if that's the underlying crux of all this. I think Ed just said it again. He feels like he hadn't gotten a response. I think, I'm not saying the, this hearing is without merit, I think this has been a good hearing. I think he gave the fire chief to explain his rationale, Nelson explained his rationale, Ed explained his rationale behind the complaint. And I think what was done up there was done appropriately. his rationale behind the complaint. And I think what was done up there was done appropriately with public safety and public health as a paramount concern. I think the issue going forward would be some kind of after-action report, after-action, where stuff like this doesn't come up again. I don't expect the fire chief to stop, or the police, or the fire, highway to stop in the middle of some kind of work or they're doing, oh shit, you know, I didn't say that. I told you I'm burned out. They stop what they're doing to say, I need to inform this department or this commission. I just think after-action maybe needs a little bit of attention. And I'm not sure if that's, like I said, you as chair with the administrator, we come up with something, or they, they sit down, there's obviously a little bit of tension or...
Tension.
Like, one guy doesn't see the way the other person does. At least air it out in a, in a formal setting, and hopefully going forward on a simple, simpler situation, similar to one they broached tonight that we didn't wanna get involved with because we really can't. Things don't mushroom to the point where somebody comes in again and says, I'm, you know, I'm being belittled and ignored, or someone else comes in and says, I'm being singled out, even though I'm acting within my scope. I guess I'm rambling and I cursed earlier and I apologize, my mother's rolling in the grave.
Mr. Massey?
I, I believe there was no mal-intent, but there is a bylaw. I mean, I, I agree with Sully. We, going forward, like, I think we had five days to actually send a letter or call, and it didn't happen. That's letter of the law, which is why Mr. Bazinet's here, right? There's no other reason. He knows, I believe him, too. Like, it had to come down, everybody knew that, but this is a process issue. And, and we didn't, everybody knew and assumed that, yep, we're gonna go and take it down. I think, I think what, Ed, correct me, you're just asking that, you know, someone should've just sent an email or a call, even if it was after the fact that, to, like, to close the loop. Am I right about that?
Say that again, because I gotta tell you, again, Sully knows, the acoustics in here are dreadful.
Yeah. No, so, let me make sure I get my comments right again.
It's okay.
No, no, it's okay. So, everybody understands on, on either side of this issue that there's no mal-intent. I, I believe that, there's no mal-intent. There's an emergency issue, it's a disaster, had to come down, but the bylaw says you're supposed to, within five days, whatever, to say something to the Historical Commission. That didn't happen.
Correct.
I've known you a long time, you're here because it is a process issue, and you wanted to make sure that we brought attention to it, that going forward, as Mr. Sullivan says, we make sure these things don't happen like that again. Is, is that kind of what you're asking here?
Yeah. I'm an old-school guy. I like to go by the rules. And, you know, it's just annoying when us laypeople put in all this time and effort, and that bylaw took a while to, to be crafted back in the day, so that we could avoid this, and then it just falls apart if it's not followed. And that's why we're here today, wasting our time.
Not a waste.
Not a waste, brought, brought, put shine, some light on the issue, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Chief, can you have one more?
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment and one suggestion, and then I'm done. Again, nine times out of 10, in most situations, I would agree 100% with Mr. Bazinet. With the Mace fire, it was unique. The building was already on the ground. And if I had to do Mace all over again, I wouldn't do it any different than I did the first time. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
No, and I'd like you there, too, right. You guys did a great job.
And number two, can I make a suggestion? Why is there not some provision in that bylaw that states that the Historical Commission has to have some kind of register or list of buildings in town that have historical significance? Again, I'm all for the historical significance of buildings, and I think Ed knows this, 'cause we've had plenty of conversations over the years about it, but just to have blanket authority over every single building and house in town just doesn't make sense. It's just lunacy to me. That's, that's pretty much all I got to say.
So, knock you out, then, so my comment would be, sounds like the intent of protecting the, the health and safety of the town was, and everyone's, their first job, it was amazing job by, by, by everyone, you know, I know we said it before, but, you know, Chief, you and everyone else that was involved, you know, it was an amazing job in working with, sounds like all the right people to make sure that all these issues were, were taken care of. So I don't think anyone's gonna argue that, uh, that this, this process that we're talking about tonight held us back from doing what's right for public safety. And on the flip side of that is, there's, there's bylaws that have to be addressed. So, you know, I'd argue if it's, if there's, uh, like always, state law, federal law, town bylaws intertwine and disagree with each other occasionally. And sometimes the best path isn't necessarily easy to discern when this one trumps this one, that one trumps that one, and on Tuesdays, you know, it's, it's a free-for-all. I, I, it, it needs work. So, I'd argue the intent, the intent, uh, the intent in such a disaster, if this was a small house fire, I'm imagining where a lot more of the procedural bylaw stuff would've been handled, but that's speculation on my part, and that's not necessarily what, uh, the intent of this is. So, without reading into it too much, I'm gonna say, you know, I, I think, uh, an incredible job was done, and some of the procedural stuff, that issues could've, could've been, could've been done differently, and we should probably, Mr. Sullivan's, uh, response, some kind of, uh, what do we learn from it, what are we gonna do other than the, in the, the actual containment of fire, what are we gonna do differently, the chief's point? So with that, what's the board's pleasure? Is there an ask?
I can, I can form my suggestion into the form of a motion, see if the board supports it, if you like, Mr. Chairman.
The, the board's selectman has to vote relative to the complaint or take any action relative thereto, so yes.
Alright, so on that, alright, just a couple separate motions then. Board of Selectmen has acknowledged, held a hearing on the above issue submitted by Mr. Bazinet on behalf of the Historical Commission. You didn't submit it as an individual, right? You're submitting it as...
This is a host, this is a Historical Commission, right.
And as a course of action, I, I recommend, or I ask, that the board take no action on the way that the Mace chemical fire was handled. That's my first motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Fire itself, remember.
Yes, the, up to, up to was put out.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, through you as the chair, to the town administrator, in his judgment also, your, your judgment, come up, formulate a after-action review concerning the fire chief, building inspector, and Historical Commission to come up with a better process to handle the demolition bylaw that was apparently, Mr. Bazinet's, you know, viewed not handled right. I guess you have, come up with some kind of way to improve communication or to ensure that the demolition bylaw is followed. That's probably our word salad, but hopefully my intent came through.
Second, the discussion is...
Discussion.
So basically, meet, hash it out, and, and, and figure out a plan on what happens if this ever happens again? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, essentially. So it doesn't happen again going forward. Doesn't interfere with state regulation, federal, DEP, EPA. When it gets down to that, like you said, Mr. Johnson, federal, state, they sometimes intertwine, sometimes they conflict. But when we get to the lowest common denominator, which would be the town bylaw, that communication in the bylaw is followed, would be my intent of my motion.
So, alright, you second, and we're in a discussion, right?
So more or less, Mr. Chairman, i- is it for him to come up with the procedure for the compliance of that bylaw?
Yeah, like, just, you know, my, my end result would be that everybody leaves that meeting with the understanding, okay, this is how we handle a normal type situation that does not conflict with the bylaws and result.
So, the, the chief's point, for the 10%?
Correct.
It's probably, it's probably half of 1%, but, you know, most house fires are fortunately not as immense and...
Correct.
Obviously, some of them are very dangerous and that happens, but is that the...
They don't have leaking barrels of...
Yeah, yeah. Unknown chemicals, okay.
Unknown chemicals.
Alright, understood. Alright, so that's the discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? In unanimous. Alright, Mr. Massey?
So, Ed, thank you for bringing it forward. We gotta shine light on it, otherwise, you know, same thing would happen next time. So, you know, everybody, I think, tried to do the right thing, and now we're gonna make sure that we don't end up here again. Thanks for your stewardship, as always. Thank you, Dean and, and Nelson for...
Doing what they did.
Doing what you guys did.
Right, doing what they thought was best, and the end result is it was.
Right.
Thank them also.
Yep, exactly.
Alright, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Chief Kalowitz?
Uh, just to be real quick, um, since I started 22 years ago, the parking violations in town have not changed the fines for them. Um, we have some areas of concern by Dippin' Donuts, the Town Beach, and around Nichols College. And, uh, right now, uh, the lowest fine is $5, then $10, 15, depending on the infraction. I propose to, uh, double the bottom three, uh, to go from 5 to 10, 10 to 20, 15 to 25, and leave handicap and fire lane as is, $100. The problem that comes in is, uh, it was brought to my attention several times, um, where Nichols College students keep parking on Center Road, they get a $10 ticket, and for them, I don't think it's enough to, uh, prohibit them from parking. So I think if we increase it to $20, I think it's gonna make a little bit of a bigger fine, and, uh, maybe it'll deter them from parking on Center Road.
So you don't think the low fines deter the behavior?
I, I don't think, I think we're too low compared to some of the other towns. I looked at Webster, Southbridge, which also have parking situations. Charlton, Oxford, not so much, uh, and we are far below right now. So if, by that increase, we're gonna be pretty much where the other towns are.
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, you comfortable with that amount? You wanna make them higher?
I, I think this would be good for the starting point, at least. Um, and then hopefully, if, uh, you know, things don't change in two, three years, it was revisit the idea.
I'm, I'm a firm believer, enforcement is part of education. You get caught, you get caught again, it's your own fault.
The board's pleasure?
Make a motion, we accept a police chief's recommendation to increase the parking ticket fees to the amounts that he mentioned.
Exactly.
For the record.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Can we just make that effective, um, May 1st? That'll give us enough time to, uh, print out new tickets through a universal tag.
Is that good with the, uh...
May my motion to include May 1st, 2023?
Second, okay.
Second.
Second, okay. You're okay?
Yes.
Alright. Effective May 1st.
Effective May 1st. The increase.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Old business, any old business? Departmental communication. Chief Kalowitz, wanna go first?
Uh, just real quick, also, you're gonna see a bunch of blue lights on the roads the next couple weeks. Uh, April 1st, we start the distracted driving. It's, uh, it's a grant through the state where, uh, we put extra patrol shifts to, uh, try to catch people on their phones, um, maybe as they're driving, stuff like that. So you'll see us, uh, more with the blue lights on, so just, uh, make sure you're off your phones when you're driving. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, Jeff?
I don't have anything.
You have anything? Water sewer?
Evening. Uh, just a couple quick things. Um, one is, I'd like to thank all the townspeople departments, uh, with all the good well wishes, and my family appreciated it. It was unfortunate what happened, but everybody's dealing with it, and that helped a lot for everybody, so thank you again. Uh, the other thing is, um, we are gonna be starting flushing, we've started it now. Uh, there may be some dirty water complaints, but just let your faucets run a little bit, and we should clear it. Uh, but we got a lot of work to do there because of all the construction and all the issues we've had in the previous year, so we're trying to make up for lost time. Lead and Copper's coming out again, those lucky people get to receive their bottle. Uh, state mandates, we have to do it. I know it's very cumbersome and bothersome, but, um, we appreciate it, and we have to do it. So, and, uh, in the next month or two, you're gonna start seeing activity at the Wanamene Project over here, February, at Warsaw Prospect, all that, so just try to avoid that area when possible. That's it.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Bye, Chief.
Yeah, just one quick thing on a high note. Timothy Dunnehugh, firefighter, paramedic, Timothy Dunnehugh graduated full-time recruit program on Friday. Uh, he graduated near the top of his class, so congratulations to him, and he'll be back on regular shift tomorrow.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
Congratulations. Wanna bring him in, Chief? We can recognize him at some point. Thank you.
Rich?
Just a quick follow-up. Uh, you had a few action items, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one of them was going to be the assessor, the $360,000. Everyone realizes, there's equalized valuations, there's home valuations, there's the, the tax rate and all those calculations. Just to reiterate what I believe is being asked, is sort of a sliding scale, not just 360, but going up and down, and it's an approximation for everyone's, uh, everyone's benefit. Um, it is a moving target. I say that because there are so many other factors. The idea that you're getting sort of a fixed increase is a ballpark, it's the best guess. You can go down the rabbit hole and really start making gradations by your home from 225 to 230. Everyone understands, we want the best information out there, so we're happy to move that forward. Uh, on a positive note, looks like we're gonna have a dental renewal at zero. I don't have that confirmed, but that's what the words are telling me, so that is a good thing. Um, there's always a few stragglers. Appreciate everybody who paid their water sewer and their excise, especially the excise, because not everybody who owns a home pays a water bill from an apartment or something. If you're driving a car, you've got an excise, and everybody and their uncle has come in. Appreciate everybody's concern, uh, on the second floor, third floor, sort of corralling people around. I know, uh, the assessor and the town clerk have had a big smile on their face because, nope, go over and see Donna, Danielle, Rich, what have you, to get things paid. So appreciate everybody's patience while we work through that.
Wonderful, thank you. Student rep, nope. Um... I was waiting for the student rep to ask a question the other night.
Yeah.
At the, uh, information. Alright, uh, board members' comments. Mr. Landry?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna thank everybody for coming in, um, using the process we have in place to straighten things out, communicate better. Uh, the board's doing an excellent job, all department heads, outstanding job with your units, um, and I look forward to, um, this spring. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Echo Mr. Landry, and I wanna thank Mr. Sansucci, Mr. and Mrs. Hurst for getting up. Um, that's what we ask for, I ask for all the time. I want, I would like people to come with their questions, try to get the answers. with their questions, try to get the information from the source. A lot of, unfortunately, a lot of the questions tonight were more geared towards, why is the school doing things this way? Why is the school asking for this? We did have the two public hearings, we had the listening session. School committee had multiple, multiple meetings on their budget, public. And if we are able to schedule, to get more information out there, I'm all for it. More information is a good thing. But again, I, I, I thank, they're very active. They've been around before. They're passionate. And I certainly appreciate, I've always said, I'd rather have 500 people vote and lose than 50, you know, and win. Same thing with a public hearing. I'd have, I'd love to have the place packed with questions, so they can't say, accuse somebody of misrepresenting numbers, or trying to mislead the public. But more information is good. Let it stand on its merits. And as Mr. Marcy said before, as, as long as I've been on the board and all you guys, we've always put articles like this in front of the voters. It'd be easy for us five to say yes or no, and that's it. Put it out there, and there's really no reason not to get a ballot. With early voting and absentee ballots, and all-day voting, there's no reason, there should not be a well-attended election. Thank you.
Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it's like, I don't know what Sully said. Yes, thank you, guys. Love to see people coming in, asking questions directly. Can't get it from, like, the sources that we do have, come in and talk to us. And that's the way this is supposed to work. So, thank you. Because what you did is not just educate some people here, but people watch, and they're going to watch again on YouTube, the inevitable Facebook posts from people who might have some or, some or part information. But I stand by what I said earlier. You can't just do this with one listening session. Again, the school has, it made a big ask. You know, we got to work together to make sure everybody has had a chance. Because the trickle-down for information uptake is, is slower than a lot of people think it is. It's always been that way. And when you're going to ask for something on this order of magnitude, then we better damn well have our, our, our sessions scheduled, and all, every material. I want it, everything printed out so people could take it home, talk to the neighbors about it, ask any questions. So then, if nothing is, no stone is unturned. It's all left there on the field, so, so to speak, so people have what they need to make that decision. So, again, thank you for everybody for coming tonight.
So I, I want to apologize if I, I'm, I'm frustrated with, one of the easy, one of the easiest failures of, of leadership is poor communication. And I felt like we have done a lot of, a lot of great things with, you know, not just people in the room, but, you know, it's also Debbie, and trying to reach out in new ways. We've asked questions on different ways to do it, and, you know, we're not perfect, and there's still opportunities for improvement. You know, whether it's, you know, did we miss a chance at Webster Times, or did was, you know, if, if that's true or not, you know, that article doesn't say it. And then, you know, what other ways to do this? Because it's the intent to, to inform the public on, on what the, the proposals are to, to, to run the town government in a way that's, you know, outside of the regular norm, but within the laws, to give the public the best opportunity to decide what's right for them. So getting better at that communication is, is key, and part of that is accuracy, part of that is, is, is wide open as it can be, and still be official from the town. There's some balance there that we're trying to achieve, and we haven't hit the sweet spot yet. And as way as technology goes, I'm, I'm sure we'll always have challenges. So if you get a legitimate concern, you know, get the information to us. You don't have to wait for this meeting. If you find a mistake in a town meeting, shoot it over. We've had them before, and we appreciate them to, you know, to confirm if it's right or not. So with that, I'll seek a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion, Board of Selectmen, to convene into executive session pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A3, to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, treasurer, collector, complaint against a highway superintendent, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. Also, be convened into executive session pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. Reason, federal, multi-district litigation versus, is that supposed to be CVS?
CVS.
CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, Allegra, not to reconvene in public session.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Roll call, vote?
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.